Hello everyone and welcome to another episode of Los Banos Talk. My name is Justin Collins. Tonight's episode is going to be a very interesting episode. And tonight's episode, I'm essentially going to talk about the recent school board meeting in where the school board held a process for appointing a new school board district one trustee, appointee to fill the remainder of the time of that seat. I'm going to be talking about the process. I'm going to be explaining what happened and I'm going to show you all the candidate interview questions side by side for easy comparison. And I'll be getting into all of that in just a moment, right after a brief message from our sponsor. And we're back. Thanks for watching. So what I did to make viewing and comparison a little bit easier for you guys was essentially this. So first things first, let me explain the process and a little bit of background as to why this was done this way. So this was over district one. Currently there are six trustees on the school board as of right now. District one became recently vacant after trustee Anai Rodriguez resigned because she moved out of her district because she no longer resided in her district. She moved to a different part of town. As a result, the school board essentially had two options. One was that they could hold a special election. And then the second option was that they could do some kind of interim appointment to fill that seat for the remainder of its term, which is about a year and a half. This term would essentially end in November of 2022. So the process that was created was essentially as follows. The district decided that they were going to hold an appointment. And so what they decided to do was that they would hold an interview. They would give a time period. It was about 30 days or so, but they gave a time period that allowed candidates to submit an application into the district. They filled out an application and then they came to the appointed time and place, which was the district office last Thursday. The candidates were then asked six questions each. And the order in which they were asked these questions were based on alphabetical order of their last name. There were four candidates who submitted and I'm going to list them now for you in order of which they interviewed in. So first being Dennis Reyes, the second being myself, Justin Collins, the third being Alma Fabian, and the fourth being Jean Lieb. Now candidates had 20 minutes to answer six questions. Each question was asked by a separate board member. In the regular interview, what happened was is that a board member would essentially interview for 20 minutes straight. In other words, answer all questions one through six, all at the same time within 20 minutes. And then the next candidate would come in and so on. And the order went Dennis Reyes, myself, Justin Collins, Alma Fabian and Jean Lieb. What I've done is I've taken all the questions and put them side by side. So essentially this, you don't have to watch through a lot of dead space and time of candidates coming here and back and forth. Essentially the flow is like this. You're going to hear question one asked every single time of every candidate. I started it and stopped it at the exact same place for each candidate. In other words, I kept the exact same order that was used in the meeting, which was the alphabetical order. And what I did was I have each candidate's answer to question number one. At the bottom of the screen, you'll see that it's displayed the question. So you don't forget what the question was. I also put the name of the candidate on the screen. So you know who that person is. And last, to make it all fair, I start the video clip at the point in where the board president Ray Martinez says, and on to the next question or says now on to question one or whatever the number is. And then I end the video at the point where the respective board member that asked the question says, thank you. And right before they move on to asking the next question. So you'll notice that some of the candidates have longer answers to questions than others. This is not a result of editing. I essentially have started and ended at the same point from the moment they say on to that question. And then I've ended it when they've thanked them for their answer. Different candidates answered the questions in different lengths of time, but the order and the amount of time given is all the same. So now that I've got that out of the way, here's the interview questions.
Uh, we're going to go ahead and start with question number one.
I've got question number one.
Yes, you do. Go ahead.
All right, Mr. Reyes. Guys, why are you running for the Los Banos School Board?
Why am I running for the Los Banos School Board? Uh, you guys are in some trying times here. You've got a declining enrollment, uh, which is going to affect your budget, especially as you move forward. Uh, next year will be worse than this year with the declining enrollment. My 21 years that I did serve on the board, we did go through two years of a declining enrollment. Uh, you've got some facility needs. I know the science wing is being talked about at Pacheco High School, but you need to know, you need to make sure that you have funds for that. Uh, I know from your budget that you are borrowing money in-house, which is good when it's necessary from Fund 40 to help you with some of your needs. But you need to be prudent in your dealings and make sure that you put money back into that fund. So it's completely whole, uh, when the time comes forward. And with this pandemic going on, uh, we need to sit down and figure out a clever way to get all of the children back in the classroom. Because I'm sure every one of you can agree with me this last year and a little bit more has been nothing but a waste, especially for those children that are on borderline uh, of making the grade. And my fear is that we're going to lose even more than normal. Uh, because there's a lot going on with these kids not going to school. You really can't, uh, you don't have as much control over them. And, uh, I think I could with, with my years of experience, I think if we sit down and visit, we can come up with a solution to, uh, better off the students in our school district.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We'll go ahead and, uh, start with, uh, the first question, which is, uh, going to be administered by Gary Munoz. Go ahead, Gary.
Hi. Hello, Mr. Collins.
Hello.
Okay. First question here. Why are you running for the Los Banos Unified School District School Board?
That is a great question because it lets me just be upfront and honest. The thing is, is that I have two kids that are seriously going to start school next year and they're going to have to go through the entire system from kindergarten all the way through high school. And I'll be honest, um, I didn't go, you know, to local school here. I got, I went through public school, you know, in Virginia. And honestly, I'm really glad that I did because when I look at the performance in terms of our local school district, when I look at things like our high, high school dropout rate, when I look at our students' test scores, their college preparedness, et cetera. Um, it honestly genuinely concerns me that I'm going to be sending my kids right now actually to the school district as it is through our public school system. And that's really what I want to change. I, it's not really to, you know, pat anybody on the back or say, you know, it's, it's great and hunky dory as it is, honestly, no. A lot really needs to change and it needs to change fast. And so for me, it's personal. This is going to be my kid's education. Uh, we have a horrible, uh, gang problem and it's really youth related. And a lot of that has to do, I think, with our high, high school dropout rate. And we also have a poverty problem. And I think a lot of that has to do with that as well. And so to me, really, if we want to fix a lot of the problems within our community and if I want to give as a father, give my kids the best shot at life with a quality education, then I need to improve it. And so I want to take a hands-on role and actually be a part of that and, and, and help fix it. And I believe that I'm very capable of doing so because I'm very analytical, research oriented, uh, research oriented. Um, and I believe that it can be a help from day one. I already know Robert's Rules of Order. I have a copy at home. I already know, uh, I watched the meetings already. I already am familiar with many of the challenges and stuff we're facing. Right now we're dealing with COVID. It's a very tough time to be in the position that you guys are in or in this position. Um, but tough times call for tough solution and tough people. And I believe that I would be the kind of person who would be able to take on these issues head on and do something about it. And I'm not willing, and I'm not, um, afraid to voice my opinion or to try to get things done myself personally. So those are the reasons primarily why I chose to run.
We're going to go ahead and start the questions. Uh, you have a total of 20 minutes and there's a timer. So you'll be advised when we're getting down to the last five minutes.
Okay.
So the question is Gary Munoz's question.
Hello, Fabian. How you doing?
Fine, thank you.
First question is going to be, why are you running for the Los Banos Unified School District School Board?
Uh, well, there's many reasons. Um, one of the principal reasons is because I have noticed that, that, you know, I'm student achieving, especially with COVID is going downhill. I have, uh, two students that are currently, you know, um, at the high school. One that's in elementary and I just feel that, you know, if I join, um, a team that's looking forward to, you know, making sure that all students are being successful or achieving. And, um, with this distant learning, we have to be creative. We have to make sure that, um, you know, all the options are being tapped on. Make sure that we are researching, making sure that, you know, these kids are learning and when they're supposed to be online. Uh, and it's just, um, that's my, my, my major reason for wanting to join the board, to be a part of a change, to be a part of a solution of the problems that we're facing as an educational body right now.
Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. So, uh, we'll go ahead and start with question number one, which, uh, Gary. It's Gary's question.
Okay. Hello, Minister Lipp.
Hello.
Okay. The first question is going to be, why are you running for the Los Banos Unified School District School Board?
I am running to help students be the best they can be and assist the teachers as well and parents. This is a, a team effort, uh, including city staff, um, or a school staff. Um, and I just want to, I want to help.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Jean. Question number two is Mark.
Hi, Dennis. Could you list some of the primary responsibilities of a school board member?
The main number one responsibility of a school board member is to hire a superintendent. You hire the superintendent, that's the only person that you hire or fire. The superintendent is then supposed to take your directive with his ability and knowledge on where he thinks the school district needs to go best on, based on their needs. You take his directive and he's the one that is responsible to evaluate the principals. And the principals are the ones that evaluate their staff. If the superintendent is doing his job proper, he will get on those principals. If we have staff members, teachers and other people that are not doing their job, it is that principal's job to take care of that. And if he doesn't, the superintendent should step in and visit with the principal to make sure it gets taken care of. Your number one priority as a board member is to hire the superintendent, set directive at your meetings, make sure what you're asking for gets done. Make sure all the students get taken care of. And working together with the superintendent, you move the district forward based on its needs. And that when I say needs, you're talking facilities, you're talking transportation, you're talking food services. And mostly you're talking about in the classroom. Do we have what we need to bring all of the kids up to grade level? Uh, like we all want so that we can graduate a higher percentage of students. Cause you know, once they leave Los Banos, you know, you can, you can move kids through the system and they can pass with Cs and Bs and some of them even with As. But if they're not getting the right instruction in the classroom, they're going to get to the next level and they're going to fail. They're going to fall behind and then they're going to fall out because they, they just, they don't feel like they can compete. But if we structure these kids properly, and we all know, some of you have been on the board long enough, these kids need to be at grade level by third grade. If they're not at grade level, reading proper and having the math skills that they knew need by third grade, we're going to lose them. We're going to lose them somewhere in the system, if not before they graduate from high school shortly after. And we need to try as school board members, we need to try to make sure that the direction that is set by our superintendent, the only person we hire or fire is the direction we need to get these kids successful for the next level.
Thank you.
All righty. Thank you, Dennis. Question number two, Mark.
Hi, Justin. Could you list some of the primary responsibilities of a school board member?
Sure. Um, so the school board, uh, governs, but it does not manage. You could think of it essentially kind of as the legislative body of the district. Uh, the superintendent, you could think of him, I guess, as the head executive or chief executive comparable to the city government, kind of like city manager in a sense. Um, the staff does a lot of the implementation and a lot of the preparation and putting things, uh, on the agenda, et cetera, and doing research. Uh, but at the end of the day, the board is ultimately responsible for actually passing said legislation and ultimately is the last stop that really holds that accountable, if you will. So one of the things would be, yes, uh, they do hire and fire one person essentially, and that would be the, the superintendent. Um, so there is somewhat of a supervisory role there, but not exactly. It's not like management, but that is one thing that holds that position. Uh, I guess you could say accountable to the people. Um, another thing would be to address people's concerns, uh, look into things. Um, also you can place items on the agenda or try to, uh, you could at least propose it. Um, and then you're one of the votes, of course. Um, you're also a voice. You can raise, you know, you can raise your voice and basically state, you know, here's an issue as I see it, this is something we need to be fixed or give ideas, et cetera. It's one thing to be on the sidelines and essentially email, you know, uh, a trustee, et cetera, and say like, this is a problem. I see this blah, blah, blah. But it's an entirely different thing to actually, um, uh, come up with a solution and implement it and, and do the difficult work to get it done. So, so some of it I see as research. Some of it I see as, um, the legislative part of voting. Some of it I see as, uh, being a stewardship, uh, looking out for the things like the budget report might be prepared for staff, but ultimately it's still got to be approved. So basically it's kind of the last final stop, that last layer of protection for citizens uh, and to watch out. And so it's very important that we have a board that's not, you know, asleep at the wheel, but that is attentive, paying attention, knows what's going on, does their homework, shows up. And, uh, and, and I guess you could say bring the game face, but it's, um, I mean, to me that's, that it, it, that kind of sums up generally. I mean, it's very subjective as to what we could say is, is specifically line items, what a board member does and doesn't do. But, uh, ultimately, yeah, legislation governing, uh, in the, in the last resort for citizens and, and supposed to be their voice for their district.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Justin. Uh, second question is Mark.
There. Hi. Could you list some of the primary responsibilities of a school board member?
Well, um, to provide the vision for, for the district, to make sure, you know, that the community, community members are being heard, to be the voice of the students, to be the voice of the parents, making sure that, you know, the superintendent is going ahead and making sure that the vision that the school board provides is, uh, actually being achieved, that the goals are being met. Um, and so basically just being that bridge between the community and the schools district, making sure that we are there to, um, focus that on a rigor, make sure that there's during the curriculum, making sure that this all students are being engaged, making sure, you know, that the district's vision is being achieved and those goals. And of course, making sure, you know, that the superintendent and the, all of his assistants and the whole staff is being, um, being accountable for what they're supposed to be doing.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Alma. Uh, question number two, Mark.
Jean.
Hello.
Could you list some of the responsibilities, the primary responsibilities for a school board member?
Primary responsibilities for a school board member? Um, school board member is there to hire and, uh, evaluate the superintendent of schools. Uh, the school board member is there to make sure that the district stays solvent and so watching how the money is being spent. And primarily as the support for the district, but that's their primary goals, primary rules.
Thank you.
We're going to go into question number three, uh, my question. Why is it important, uh, for board members to be passionate about responsibilities and tasks associated with being a board member?
Well, because it, it affects your daily life. If you're not passionate about watching these kids succeed, uh, you're probably not a good business person. If you're not passionate about what your job is and your job is to make sure the district is physically sound, the kids are getting the right education. And if you can't be passionate about that enough to where you're willing to tell friends and neighbors and close people that, you know what, you're out of line. This isn't the direction we're going. You need to straighten out and do your job proper, or it's my job along with the superintendent to let that superintendent know that, hey, we need to address an issue over here. Yes, I grew up with him. Yes, I've known him for 40 years. But doggone it, if he's not doing his job proper, we need to make sure that it's done right or we're going to lose these, this is our future. And some of you here are just as old as I am. And some of these kids that we're going to educate moving forward are going to take care of us in our later years. Now, do you want that doctor or that care person to be somebody that passed with a C? That passed through a class because they cleaned the chalkboard and they showed up on time? Or do you want that person to be somebody that actually did the work in the classroom? And they succeeded because they put their best foot forward because we gave them the opportunity to succeed. So you really need to be passionate, uh, and feel for the students. And it doesn't matter where they come from, doesn't matter who they are. You need to, or your focus is the students and employees. And the job of your superintendent is to take care of the employees and make sure the students get the right education with the curriculum that's being put in front of them. But as a board member, you need to be passionate enough to be willing to tell somebody that's trying to run you in a certain direction that, hey, that's not the directive that we're doing in our district. We need to take care of all of these students. We need to run certain programs that are going to benefit others so that we can bring them up. You know, I'm, I'm not, uh, with the years that I was on the board, uh, it got to where the state wants everybody to be in a bubble. They want everybody to succeed at the same level, at the same pace. Well, we don't want that at Los Banos. Okay? I, I would not want that at Los Banos. I am passionate enough to say those that can achieve on their own, we should make it tougher for them. We should give them harder work. We should push them to a level that will have them succeed at a different level when they get to college. Those that are below the bubble, those that are at grade average or below, we need to give them the extra, uh, the extra attention, the extra services, whatever it takes to bring them up as fast as we can. But in saying that, we don't want to lose focus on, let's take care of the ones at the bottom and the ones on the top are going to take care of themselves. That's not right. And we surely don't want to say, let's just take care of all those in the middle and up and forget about the ones on the bottom. Cause we want everybody to succeed. We're all different. All of us are different. We all have different levels, but we can bring everybody up to a level where they can be successful once they leave, once they leave high school. Now I'm, I'm, I don't know if you, I don't want to say perfect because, uh, the hardest thing from perfect, but I'd be a perfect example of somebody that left high school, didn't go to college and started a business and I've done very well for myself. So everybody doesn't have to go to college, but in those years of education while they're here, we need to, we need to, uh, how would you say that? We need to get them motivated so that, you know, they might want to go to a trade school. They might want to go to the service. They might want to start their own business. And you know, basically, uh, a third of all businesses fall within the first three to four years. But you know what? If you never try, you never fail, but if you never try, you'll never succeed. So we gotta, we gotta let some of these students know that, don't be scared to try something. And if you don't quite make it, just stand up and go at something else. It's not a, it's not a dead loss because you fail. We all fail at something, but our job is, yes, we need to, we need to bring all these kids up and give them an opportunity, uh, to move forward and be productive adults when their day comes.
All righty. Thank you, Dennis. Uh, question number three is my question. Uh, why is it important for board members to be passionate about their responsibilities and tasks associated with being a board member?
Well, you absolutely, I mean, why would you want a dispassionate board member? I mean, that doesn't make any sense. Of course you want the board member to be passionate and to care about what he's doing. It needs to be personal. It needs to matter to that person because at the end of the day, the decisions that the board makes affects people's lives. It affects the quality of education for students. It affects teachers and it affects parents. And if you don't look at it like that and you don't look at your decisions like they have consequences. And if you don't, uh, and if you're not passionate about what you're doing and don't want to be here, then you shouldn't be here. So absolutely it's necessary to be passionate about it. And I'm extremely passionate about it. And one of the reasons is like I said, because I have two kids and I really care a lot about education. I myself was actually on the track. I was originally going to be a history teacher myself. I've done a lot of tutoring. I've done TAing. I've done, I've done some limited teaching in the past as well. And the thing is, is education is really important to me. And I look in and a lot of the things I see with our district genuinely scare me, genuinely do. I'll, I'll be blunt and, and I want to help address those. I don't want to just pay lip service to them or point them out or be that guy who's like, oh, here's a problem. Here's a problem. I want to help. I want to actually fix some of the problems. And I think I can do that by providing ideas, et cetera, and help provide direction to staff. And I'm someone who would be accountable to the citizens and transparent with them. And they can come to me and talk to me like they already do. And I would try to, uh, voice their concerns and, and, and I'm not afraid to. concerns. And and I'm not afraid to do so, even if it's at the disagreement, maybe with some of you guys. I get that. You know, you're not gonna agree with me on everything. But at the, but but that's, you don't wanna guess men anyway. At the end of the day, it's important to have someone who actually cares, is looking out for the students, and not caring about some kind of political career, et cetera. And that's the thing. I'm doing this because my kids.
All righty. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Alma. Question three, and that's my question. Why is it important for a board member to be passionate about the responsibilities and tasks associated with being a school board member?
Our future is the children. We need to be passionate and making sure that, you know, that future is gonna be a bright one. It is our, you know, as a community, as a member of a school board to make ensure, make sure that that student, every single student, not just, you know, the people that have homes, the foster kids, homeless kids, special ed, that English learner, that they're all being successful, that they're all being engaged, that they all have a proper education to be able to compete with, you know, those students that, you know, thank goodness, they have a good home, they have a good support system, guiding them and helping them after school with their homework. And so I think that's, you know, what I believe in.
Okay. Thank you. Number three is my question. Why is it important for board members to be passionate about their responsibilities and tasks associated with being a board member?
Students are the future, and they need to be well educated. And trustees are there to help facilitate that. And they need to be passionate about making sure that students are given the best tools possible, and teachers given the best tools possible technology-wise so that students can be productive members of society once they graduate. And the goal is to have everyone graduate. Not everyone's gonna go to college, but the school district needs to provide the best opportunities possible to everyone.
All right. Thank you.
I just wanna talk to you real quick about becoming a supporter for Los Bannas Talk. You get exclusive behind the scenes content and opinion pieces that are available to supporters only. Plus, you get all the regular videos that I do, first and without ads like this one. Another way that you can become a supporter is by going to www.losbannastalk.com, click the become a supporter tab at the top of the screen, and you'll be brought here. And you can see all the videos right here.
That was, onto question four, and that's Anthony's.
Hi, Dennis. Describe what you envision as an effective governance team.
An effective governance team, if you really wanna truly be effective, you will work together as a group. You will not always agree, because if you always agree, you'll be stuck in the mud. You'll never get nowhere. You've gotta be, you've gotta be bold enough to voice your opinion. You've gotta stand up to somebody when you think they're doing something wrong and don't back down unless, you know, when I make a statement or I do something, I always leave myself wide open. And I sit on a couple other boards that are that are actually much larger than than what you're dealing with here at Los Bannas. But I, when I say I leave myself open as a governance board, you gotta be able, if you're gonna be productive, you gotta voice your opinion. Have your facts. And if somebody counteracts you or contradicts what you're saying, you don't need to argue. You need to bring that into conversation so that you can come up with a result. It might be a compromise of some kind, but at least both sides can see, they can see where you're coming from, you can see where they're coming from, and you make a compromise. But with all this being said, you're talking about passion here. You gotta be thinking about the students. If you don't lose focus on your main objective, which is graduating these kids at a productive level, you will work together as a board, figure out your differences, and move forward. And I think that's very possible. You need to have the right person as your leader, because remember, you are representatives of our whole district, and you're at 10,400 or 800 kids right now. You're down from the 11,000 from a year ago. But you are the representative of Los Bannas Unified School District, the largest school district in Merced County. So you need to keep that in mind. You need to work together. You need to settle your differences in a professional way. And don't lose focus on what you're here for. It's not about power. I couldn't care less who the president, vice president, clerk is. It doesn't matter. We're seven adults trying to move our district in a positive way to benefit the students in our district.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Question number four is Anthony's.
I just described what you envision as an effective governance team.
Well, one, I mean, ideally, you would hope that things kind of run smoothly and efficiently so that meetings could be conducted in an orderly fashion and 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 go from item to item in a sequential order, et cetera. But a lot of what you would see is some kind of cohesion. In terms of a governing board, you would want people that are able to talk with one another civilly, that are able to express their ideas openly, that are willing to contribute to the conversation. If if people kind of just nod their head or or, then again, they're not really contributing much. At the same time, it's not that you need to butt heads, so to speak, with everybody. I'm not saying that either. But what I am saying is that you need to be a part of the team. So present mentally and physically, you know, to be there. And then also understand that it's a team effort, really, and that we all essentially want what's best for the students. We may have disagreements about how to get there, or what that looks like. But we all, at the end of the day, hopefully want the exact same thing. We just may have disagreements about how to get there, or what it looks like. And that's really kind of where the politics come to play. And that's really where the discussion element comes to play. So being someone who's open minded, willing to hear the other side out, being someone who will talk it through, do their research, and actually contribute to the conversation is part of being in that cohesive and functioning.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just onto question four, Anthony.
Hi, Alma. Describe what you envision as an effective governance team.
Well, first of all, making sure that there's unity. I mean, as a team, every single person bringing in their specialties, special skills, special talents, making sure that as, as, you know, a team, a board member needs to make sure that we are all in unison, that we come up with the solutions together, making sure that there is no animosity, making sure that it's transparency. And they all, we all have the same goal, which is to make sure that our students are learning, that they're engaged. And so, you know, just working with each other as a team to see those visions come true.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Jean. Describe what you envision as an as an effective governance team.
An effective governance team is a team that does a lot of listening and watches people, how they act, and works together to make sure that the plan that is put together is implemented properly. And and just being a team player and making sure that that you're watching how things are being done and that they're being done correctly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Dennis, onto question five, and that is Marvin's.
Yes. Hi, Dennis.
Hi.
Can you tell us what you know about our district?
What do I know about the district? I could tell you a lot from the 21 years I was here. I mean, it was myself and two others that put the mitigation agreement together that will generate us tens of millions of dollars over the years coming. And if there's any of you that aren't aware of that, we we challenge SB 50. We were told it couldn't be done, but there's a perfect example. We challenged SB 50. We took it to the table and it ruled in our favor. And next thing you knew, the developers and the city, we all met several meetings, and we have a mitigation agreement. And that mitigation agreement overrides SB 50 and level two fees. You know, you can only collect level three fees in construction if the fund is, if you're completely out of money. Well, the DIA made a clever deal in Sacramento, and they actually keep money in a fund that can't be touched. So you can't get to level three fees as a rule. Anyways, we What's that?
Sorry to interrupt. There's five, you have five minutes left.
Oh, okay. We 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 overrode that. But yeah, we did that. We built all the schools. I mean, from Lorraine Philosco forward, every school that was built, I helped buy the ground and and do the construction. And part of that, we did $32 million of modernization fund. And basically, I'm an easy guy to work with. If I voice my opinion and I'm wrong, I will admit it. But I've always felt like we could work together and we could move together as a group.
Thank you, Dennis.
Under question five, Marvin.
Justin, tell us what you know about our district.
What I know about our district? Well, okay. So Los Bannas is kind of interesting in a way. It was extremely small, and it's grown a lot. And there's been a lot of, I would call it kind of growing pains, especially recently. And we're kind of rediscovering ourselves and and things have been ultimately changing. And I think that's kind of a lot of what we're seeing is kind of this increase in professionalism, higher expectations from citizens as to as to as to what we need, et cetera. We're a very diverse district. The district, the population here is is over 70% Latino or Hispanic. We have a lot of students and parents that English is second language, and that's a need that has to be addressed. We also have a lot of students that are impoverished. I actually went to the homeless encampment behind Home Depot, and I was shocked that I met students that were doing distance learning from that encampment. And so we have a legitimate and serious poverty issue, and it makes things inequitable for our students. And so, in my opinion, we really need to address that. And really, the public school system needs to be, really help help them out, because they may not have the environment at home or the resources to really provide for themselves. So I guess in describing our district, what I mean by that is, it's very diverse, and it's also very impoverished. But it's kind of extreme. We have a section of our population that's actually well above average. And then we have a large majority that's well below average. And so we need to make sure that the school system works for everyone. And so we need to really take that into account. Our demographics, our population, our average educational attainment level, what the parents kind of look like. And what I mean by that is, you know, their educational attainment, right now, 30% of the adult citizenry has not graduated high school. That is insane. But that is a true statistic that I looked up recently about two weeks ago. And the, what I'm saying is just that, well, it's cycle of poverty. And think about it, that the kids, how much more likely are those kids to not also graduate high school in turn, et cetera, et cetera. So I think we need to take a hard look at ourselves and 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 look at, a sober look at our population, what our district looks like, et cetera, and start implementing policies, looking into grants, looking into funding, seeing what we could do to really help that out. So low income, and then English as a second language, to me, are two big areas that we really, I think, could do more and and focus on. And so that, I would say, is a big describer of our local population and some of the issues that we deal with.
Okay, thank you.
Under question four, Marvin.
Alma, can you tell us what you know about the school district, about our school district?
Well, I know that, you know, our population, there's a very high English learner population. I know there's about 77% minority students. I know that there's a lot of need to improve test score, a big need and push for, you know, that rigorous curriculum, like I was saying, and making sure that everybody has access to it, to it, and making sure that they're able to, you know, be able to enroll in those AP classes, make sure that, you know, our students are ready. If they want to go to college, have that option. If they want to join, you know, the workforce, make sure that they have that established to those career paths. If they want to, you know, whatever their choice is, we need to just make sure that that is being taken account.
Thank you.
Under question five, Marvin.
Yes. Mr. Lee, can you tell us what you know about our school district?
How much time do I have left? So I started with the school district in 2001. I was the editor publisher of the Los Bannas Enterprise. So much of what we did at the newspaper was to promote and report on what the school district did, teachers, programs. And so for 20 plus years, we took care of reporting everything that the district did, school district meetings, sporting events, graduation ceremonies, just about everything that that the that the school district was involved in. We were there most of the time I was there, reporting on it. Is that, was there anything more to that question?
No, I think you did a great job. That was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Last question, Jessica.
I have number six. Based on your research, what do you see are the greatest challenges facing Los Bannas Unified School District?
Your greatest challenge right now is your budget, because you have a declining enrollment. And those of you that haven't lived through a declining enrollment, two things are gonna happen. Employees are gonna want more money. Odds are, one of their negotiation points is they always want a class size reduction. Well, think about that. If you don't have enough money now, and you do class size reduction, you need more employees, so you can't afford to do class size reduction. So that's probably, that's probably, negotiations is gonna be big, and how you handle your money, your budget moving forward. You know, your deficit spending now, you're borrowing money from one fund to another, and that's fine, as long as you replenish that fund. But you, it's not gonna get any better next year or the following year. And looking at your budget, with 0% increase in salary, you're still deficit spending. And if there's any special needs And if there's any special needs that come up, anything different than the ordinary, you're going to be struggling to get that paid and stay intact. You need to have a 17% reserve so that you can pay at least two months of salary in case the state gets behind. I was in that position too, where the state put us off two months. Didn't give us the money they owed us and we had to figure out how to make payment. Well, the last thing you want to do is not pay your employees. So there's things like that that you need to look at. We've got to get the kids. Right now, you've got to get the kids back in the classroom. I mean, you can go to an airport and be like flies on a dog's back and, and nobody cares, but you can't put 30 kids in the classroom? No, guys, we, if the state's not going to cut us back in funding, we need to sit down, figure out a clever way, get these kids back in the classroom before we lose more than we probably have already. That's very, very important. It's all about the kids.
All right, thank you, Dennis.
Okay, you're very welcome. Nice meeting you.
Go ahead and find out, we'll bring the next candidate in. Last question, Jessica.
I have question six. Based on your research, what do you see are the greatest challenges facing Los Benes Unified School District?
Well, I kind of answered my other questions, but I'll, I'll, I would guess I'll kind of sum it up. Well, we have a large population of students that English is their second language or their parents' English is their second language, et cetera. And so for effective education, you need to have the parents involved. And that's not easy to do if the parents can't really communicate well with the teachers. And so it, it makes a lot of sense to try to put a lot of things into place. And I know that we already have DLEC, I know that we get fundings for these kind of things. But I have had parents come to me and say they still feel like more could be done on this issue.
And I, as you know, there's five minutes left.
Okay, that's fine. This is the last question though, right? Okay, so, so that is one of the issues that I see is helping with our diverse population. Personally, I think it would be really cool if we also offered bilingual education and allowed for English learners to learn Spanish and vice versa. I think that would be great for our local economy since it's often required that you be bilingual to work in, in Los Benes, even for like cashier, et cetera, that we often require it. So to me, it makes sense to do that. I think it does make sense to prepare our students to have better job prospects. We do have things for ag, but ag is not going to provide a job for literally everyone. I don't know why we don't do more with, we are doing some things with STEM, but there's, there's also coding, right? There's also a lot of other type technical skills and things that, or even the medical field. So vocational education, there's, I think, more opportunities and more things we could look at. Also writing and math, right, English and math, in order to help our students get into college. I think one of the problems is, is that we keep lowering the bar for what it takes to pass, but we're not doing them any favors because they get to college and then they're way overwhelmed and they're not prepared for it. And I've seen it when, when I tutor students, because I usually tutor college students kind of on the side and they're well underprepared when it comes to writing and when it comes to mathematics. And that's a real problem and that's something we need to address. And the answer is not just lower the bar and pass. The answer is prepare them better because it's not about that grade. That's an arbitrary whatever. Grades are kind of irrelevant. What's important is the knowledge that makes them an effective citizen, adult, that empowers them to do better in their life, that gives them the keys to their success and their future, and that gets them a job. So I think we need to look at how are we preparing our kids for the future? How are we preparing them for the local economy and beyond? I think we need to make sure that we're doing enough for our low income students and that we're addressing the needs of our diverse population here and Los Banos. And I'd say one of the biggest issues is our very high high school dropout rate. And, and then also right now, obviously, one of our big issues is dealing with hybrid learning and, and distance learning and COVID. But that is a temporary issue and when that issue resolves on its own, then we need to have a hard talk about high school dropout rate and what we could do to engage our kids, whether it be through extracurriculars, more programs, et cetera. But we have to do something.
All righty. For stepping up, coming in. You can go ahead and excuse us, we're going to go to call the next candidate in. On to question number six, Jessica.
Yes, question six. Based upon your research, what do you see are the greatest challenges facing Los Benes Unified School District?
Well, right now with, you know, the distant learning, I believe it's a challenge that's probably clear across the nation. But I'm seeing it, like I said, you know, I have, I have children here in the district. I am a teacher and I think the biggest challenge right now would be the long, the distant learning, you know, not being, the students not being engaged, the students not being able to have support at home, parents not being prepared to support their students, the technology issues. You know, some of them don't have the ability to have a hotspot. And sometimes where there is one and it's shared among a family of like three or four, I mean, technology issues are becoming a very big challenge for those kids. But, but like I said, long, long distance learning right now. But overall, I would say the test scores, you know, making sure that those, that, that those are increased and having that curriculum that supports the students to close that achievement gap that we've been seeing through the past.
Okay, well, thank you so much, Alma, for stepping up and answering these questions for us. You can go ahead and excuse yourself, we're going to go ahead and call in our candidate. On to question six, Jessica.
Question six. Based on your research, what do you see are the greatest challenges facing Los Benes Unified School District?
Well, currently, one of the challenges is to get the students back in the classroom. My son is a teacher at Fireball High School. So I have discussions with him on a regular basis concerning the challenges that take place there. And it seems like they're the same at a lot of schools. So getting students back in the classroom, given our COVID situation would be very important. It's also important that the school district watches what they spend and making sure that we have adequate funding to pay for everything. And at the same time, keep track of enrollment so we can mitigate enrollment that goes down as best we can and plan for the future with new facilities so that as warehouses are being built and they continually are being built, we have facilities to educate the teachers. And it would be nice if we could find a way to entice students who graduate from our school district to come back and take ownership of their town. The more that happens, generations after generations, I can see where it will strengthen the community. So making sure we have adequate teachers and qualified teachers, as best trained as possible, and pay them a competitive rate so we're not losing them to other districts. Those are some of the main items.
Yep.
All right, thank you. So that, that we've heard from all the candidates, we're going to go ahead and start the process.
If you'd like a little bit more behind the scenes information or would like to know more about some of the things that really guided these decisions and why some of the individuals voted the way they did, you can see that by becoming a supporter and, and seeing the behind the scenes video. But for this video, I'm simply just going to explain what happened and how we arrived. So those were the interviews. And as you can see, the same questions were asked to the same candidates. All four candidates were given the same amount of time, et cetera. And everybody finished answering the questions within the allotted time. Next, we move on to deliberation and I'll tell you a bit about deliberation. So the way the deliberation process went was that candidates were then moved back into separate areas on our personal computer or a computer provided by the district. We watched the deliberation process. Now, we weren't given any instructions other than that. And we weren't really passively watching, we were on the same Zoom meeting. And this is relevant in a, in a minute and I'll explain why. So a couple of things that happened during the meeting that a lot of people picked up on that were rather consequential and I'll explain basically the flow. So essentially, right out at the beginning of the deliberation, trustee Marlene Smith moves to nominate Dennis Arias for the appointment for the seat. At which point, President Ray Martinez reminds her that this is the deliberation phase. He wasn't really looking for nominations yet, but that this was the point where they were supposed to kind of give commentary, et cetera. Then essentially what happens is, is Marlene Smith talks about why she likes Dennis Arias and her primary reason is based on past experience with him. She basically talks about how she served on the board a long time with him. They don't always agree, but that they could be friends in the end, et cetera. And she talks about how she feels like his experiences serving on the board prior would be valuable in this particular instance and like the fact that he's not essentially new. Anthony Perea pretty much says more or less the same thing. He talks about how he has a good memory, talks about how he remembers things from past budgets. He talks about how he's very good at construction and that there's construction projects coming up. And essentially also bases his support for Dennis on prior experience and personal knowledge of him. Not so much really the interview. Then we get to Mark Benton and the same thing. She talks about having worked with him in the past, his experience on the board, et cetera, et cetera, and not really much of anything to do with the interview. The other three board members, Jessica Moran, Gary Munoz and Ray Martinez, say that essentially their favorite candidate is Alma Fabian. They say they based this off of the interview questions and their notes. They say they like the fact that she has experience as a teacher. Gary Munoz points out that he says he knows Dennis and knows where he comes from. And basically kind of lose this idea that he doesn't like him personally. Ray and Jessica essentially say their number two pick or the one they like second most would be Jean Lieb. At this point, really only Alma's questions and answers have really been talked about a little bit and Dennis's. It goes back and forth several times and they keep consistently coming to a three, three vote and can't seem to get either Alma or Dennis through. So a couple tries to get everything, to get someone, I guess, through, if you will. Jean Lieb ends up with three, three. Dennis Arias ends up with three, three. Alma Fabian ends up with three, three. And then at one point, then Mark Benton makes a motion to nominate me, Justin. Anthony Perea seconds it and then Marlene Smith votes no. And then Jessica Moran, Gary Munoz and Ray Martinez all also vote no. So that gave me four no's and two yeses, giving me the most amount of no's at that point. And so that eliminated me. Then it was down to the other three candidates, Jean Lieb, Dennis Arias and Alma Fabian. And then at a point, Dennis Arias interjects in the meeting via Zoom and basically asks the question, can the candidates cast a tie vote or break the tie? At which point, Gary Munoz and President Ray Martinez remind him that candidates aren't supposed to speak at this time, they're not supposed to be in this process, they're not supposed to ask any more questions and that, no, they're not trustees and that that would not be appropriate. In my personal opinion, that question really was rather out of line and I think pretty obvious that it wasn't part of the process. But in Dennis's defense, no one was told that they couldn't speak during that part of the meeting or during the deliberation. It just seemed to be assumed by the candidates. At which point, it gets a little confusing. It's kind of hard to tell exactly what's happening, but you can essentially see Gary Munoz kind of bringing up the idea like he should be kicked off or should be disqualified for that, et cetera. But what ultimately ends up happening is they come to a point where they keep getting at a stalemate and then they start bringing up Jean and then at which point Dennis essentially leaves the building and walks out. At that point, they basically say, you know, he's eliminated himself essentially now from this process. And so now the only two people left are Jean Lieb and Alma Fabian. So then after Dennis left, then it's essentially down to two candidates. But again, it's a kind of confusing because there wasn't, it didn't really seem like these rules were really upfront and clear in the beginning. So I could see the argument of, you know, was Dennis really eliminated at that point? It's kind of hard to say, but it ends up not really mattering because they go on for another 45 minutes, I think, to almost an hour, back and forth arguing over, you know, whether Jean Lieb or Alma Fabian. At this point, it gets kind of silly. Points are kind of brought up about both candidates that really didn't seem to come really from the interview or the, or the application, but a lot of just kind of personal, like how they know them and such. And then a few things came up that really kind of bothered some people. One of which was that you could tell that Jessica Moran, Gary Munoz and Ray Martinez were texting on their phone during the meeting and that they were reading from their phone, text messages they were receiving, which giving them essentially argumentative points for the candidate Alma Fabian. There was also a time during a break where you can tell someone called and they forgot to mute their mic briefly. You could tell that they were getting notifications and looking down at their phone all at the same time. And also you could tell they were reading because they'd look down and read it and look up, down and read it, look up. And then Gary Munoz didn't silence his phone, so when it was going off, you actually heard the ringer, et cetera, going off. So someone was texting them and essentially influencing them on how they would vote. And I reached out and asked about it because I know that the, those three are more or less in the same organization, kind of a local coalition, if you will, that somewhat falls under LUDAC, but not exactly. Some people associate it with the CAC, but the CAC is actually no longer in existence and hasn't been since 2015 or the Community Action Coalition. So I wouldn't exactly know what to call their group, but essentially it's a, a political group that's interested in, in making change in terms of specifically the educational system. I've actually spoken with leaders of the organization, this coalition, one of which being Baldo Salsito. But they're in this group that I almost can't really name because they don't have official members. They don't have a lot of other things, but they do organize politically, support candidates and get candidates into office or support candidates, you know, through a process. So I'm not entirely sure what to call this group. That it, it's like a local community organization and you can think of, and Jessica Moran, Gary Munoz and Ray Martinez are all members of this organization. Alma Fabian was the candidate that was supported by this group, if you will, and was their candidate. Anai Rodriguez was also in this group and was one of their candidates. And she is friends with Alma Fabian. These individuals were receiving text messages during the meeting and support of. Now, I actually reached out and called Baldo and asked him, Baldo Salsito today, regarding this, if he wanted to give a statement and essentially, and what he told me was essentially this. And what he told me was essentially this, uh, he doesn't think that anyone should be on their phone uh, during the meeting. He said that he did not watch the meeting and caught parts of it after the fact or someone called him uh, and put some of it on speaker, but he didn't actually watch the meeting. He also says that he was not the person who was texting them and that he doesn't know who was texting them, but that it wasn't him. Uh, he also said that uh, he, he knows that uh, those texts, because they were part of that meeting, could, could essentially be public record and that uh, it could be looked into. And that he has nothing to uh, worry about because he said he, he did not send any texts and any investigation would, would show that he did not. So I, I asked him, you know, point blank if, if he was the one who was texting them uh, during that meeting and that was his uh, response to me. Two other things that came up that were kind of uh, disturbing of that group, if you will, uh, during that meeting was later on, uh, President Ray Martinez uh, tried to silence uh, Anthony Perea and essentially told him, if you keep talking, I'm going to mute you and cut you out of the meeting. And Anthony reminded him, no, you cannot do that. And then lastly, uh, Ray Martinez talked about diversity, uh, the makeup of the district. He said the district was about eighty percent Hispanic and that it should be represented by someone who's also uh, Hispanic. Uh, at which point, uh, trustee Anthony P- Perea uh, reminded him, trustee Anthony Perea reminded him uh, that he was on the verge of, of being out of line and that race should not be a consideration for choosing a particular trustee. When we talk about the other side, if you will, there was also a couple of things that were rather obvious and disturbing. And when I say other side, I basically mean uh, the three uh, Anthony Perea, Mark Benton and Marlene Smith. A couple of things that were uh, interesting were that generally speaking, their outside knowledge of the candidate, but not necessarily the interview, et cetera, was, seemed to be the primary basis of uh, who or why they were picking who they were. Another thing that was interesting was you could tell, uh, it really didn't matter who you put up there. It could have been a ham sandwich or a monkey. Um, they would have voted for it over uh, Alma Fabian. They were not going to allow um, that other group to have control over the organization or to reach a four-vote group. And the same goes the other direction. The other group, that group was not going to vote for. Um, and by that group, I mean, I, I guess we could say the, the group uh, the community group affiliated with Baldo and LUDAC, et cetera. Um, that group wasn't going to vote for anybody other than Alma as well. So that's why we kept coming to a three to three and it was really never gonna change. So while, yes, you can say that, that group, the community um, LUDAC-ish group, if you will, wasn't willing to uh, capitulate and give up a vote. Uh, the same thing can be said really about the other side as well. At one point later on in the discussion, uh, there was a time where trustee Benton, and this was towards the end, she asked the candidate Alma Fabian uh, if she could uh, come and make a two o'clock meeting. This, in my opinion, was out of line because at that point, candidates weren't supposed to talk anymore. They weren't supposed to be asked or interviewed anymore. And that was not a question that was asked uh, during the initial phase and I don't think it was fair to ask any more additional questions, especially not to one candidate and only one candidate. Lastly, uh, she, she also kinda pointed out, I didn't get an answer. But I think also, keep in mind Dennis Reyes had been eliminated earlier. It almost seemed as though she was trying to get her to make a response or to answer in order to disqualify herself. It almost seemed like she was trying to trick her into disqualifying herself. That I found rather troubling. So really what you could see here was that there was gridlock politics outside of that meeting. The interviews were kind of pointless. Uh, everything was more or less predetermined. Everyone kinda already knew who they were gonna vote for ahead of time. Alma Fabian is essentially, you know, Baldo Salsito's choice uh, candidate and was backed by that particular group and they were gonna back her no matter what. And Anthony Perea, Marlene Smith and, and Mark Benton would have basically taken anyone at all costs over putting someone in there that would be from the other opposing group. And so there really was never any room for compromise because neither side was willing to lose. So while at the end, there was a lot of discussion about, you know, we've let people down and blah, blah, blah. You know, the truth is, it really went both ways. Both sides had a strong agenda and political goals. And essentially what happened is, is that that personal politics came first and our kids unfortunately came second. So, and, and I'll say that again, uh, political agendas and politics was first. And then uh, the needs of our children was distant second, if not third. So the conclusion was, is that we couldn't really get anywhere. And it just, it kept going, it kept getting unprofessional. Uh, there was a lot of things said that were really um, just not really appropriate. Problems really on both sides. And then ultimately what happened was, is that now we're gonna go to a special election. And in all honesty, in my opinion, really kinda all of them are to blame for that. Whatever you can say about one group not willing to change or vote, you, you can seriously say about the other. Now, me personally, I'm fine with the fact that uh, I wasn't, I wasn't chosen. And, and I knew I wasn't going to uh, from the get-go. I'm still really glad though, that I went through with the process. I learned something and I know now what the process was like for candidates. So I can definitively answer that because I went through it. But I'm also really glad I went through it because I did show something. I showed the interviews, et cetera, was, was pointless. It was all a charade. Everything was predetermined prior to the meeting. It wasn't what you knew, it was who you knew. Even as the discussions went on, it took a long time before anyone even brought up interview questions. At first, it was all about things like how long someone's known someone or how long someone's been in the community or, or et cetera, et cetera. No one cared about the questions. No one cared about the application. It was so obvious that it was all about personal cliques and political alliances. Now, I think both sides here actually do want what's best for the kids. I've spoken with Mark Benton and Anthony Perea and I've, and I've spoken with, you know, Baldo Salsito and, and some members of that group. And, and what I get is that both sides seem really genuinely interested in helping our children. But it seems like we're at a point where either way you go, neither side would want to see anything good happen if they're not the ones that can solely really take credit. And I, I think we're at a point where the board is so split and the animosity and tension is so intense that very little at this point can, can really get done. And it's, it's a shame how cutthroat and intense our local politics have really become, but it really has. And so if you're not familiar with these two groups essentially that are clashing, uh, then you really can't make sense of what you saw that day. A lot of it was rather obvious, but it's one of those things that a lot of people are aware of, but no one ever says out loud. So now we're going to a special election and it's gonna cost our district about thirty thousand dollars. We've missed the cutoff for it to happen in June or August. And so now it's gonna happen this coming November. There's, so there's a long ways between now and then. But needless to say, it just looked like from the get-go that it was gonna happen this way. We have a truly split board. No one's willing to compromise. It's three to three right now. And the only way that this was gonna really be resolved was by the people and by a vote with special election. It's expensive, it's gonna cost our district money, but our board could not come to an agreement. No one was willing to change their vote or go with the second best candidate or anything like that. And so as a result, this is what it is. If you haven't already, please like, follow, subscribe to Los Palos Talk. We have Facebook, Instagram, YouTube, Twitter, and of course, lospalos talk dot com. You can become a supporter of Los Palos Talk for just four ninety-nine a month and keep local independent journalism active live and well. Plus, get bonus content, opinion pieces and all the videos first and ad-free. Once again, my name is Justin Collins and I hope you have a wonderful rest of your day.